My microphone on, I get the signal back there. You can hear me now. Welcome to the March 5th, 2012 Board of Commissioners meeting. This afternoon at 5:30, we had a work session with Planning Board to discuss matters of concern related to parts of the UDO rewrite. They had some comments, and I thought it was very fruitful. I think many of you were here at the time. And we're going to move on now to our first item on the agenda, which is the invocation. Is Reverend Edwards here? I don't see her. I had Reverend Edwards sign up to do the invocation and pledge. Commissioner Etheridge, would you like to lead us in the invocation tonight?
Father, we come to you this evening stewards of our government, but more importantly, stewards of you. We ask you to give us, the commissioners, and the staff, the skills and talents that you can give us this evening, and give us the wisdom that you give to each and every one of us as we make decisions that will benefit the people of Currituck County. Once again, Father, our country is looking towards you to help us go through the coming days. We ask all these blessings in thy son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of changes to the agenda this evening. There are three items to add to the consent agenda. Approval of declaration restrictions on four acres of wetland area at the rural center for a boardwalk project, and authorize county manager to execute the declaration. Resolution supportive request to NC House Speaker for discretionary funding to support Currituck Community Park, Road, and Drainage Approvements, and approval of a job description for the Tourism Department. Daria, motion to add those to the consent agenda and approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, public comment. This is a period of time where any citizen can address the Board of Commissioners with any concerns or questions they have. Tonight, because of the number of people we have, we're going to limit you to strict three minutes, so please comply with that. And when you come forward, please give your name and address for the record. First person I have signed up is Rebecca Kristenberry.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Kristenberry. I work in our county emergency management office, and I just wanted to take a moment to make the residents of Currituck County aware of a grant that we're pursuing to elevate flood-prone structures. We're going to have three work sessions actually next week. We're going to have two on Monday. The first will be here at the courthouse from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then we'll have a second information session on that same night from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the satellite office in Corolla. And then the third informational session will be on Tuesday, the 13th, in Knott's Island, tentatively at the community center from 3:00 to 6:00. There are a couple criteria that must be met. It's got to be a primary structure, or primary residence, excuse me, and you also have to have at least two flood claim losses. We just ask that when you come to the session that you bring your home elevation certificate, if you have it, and also any flood claim loss information. We will be posting the information on the website, and if anyone has questions, they can contact me directly.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Next, I have Tony Tab signed up.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, I sent out an email, and you probably haven't gotten this. It went out about, let's see, 5:37. Oh, my address is 328 Mason Lane, and I live in Moayak. I'm here to speak out about the UDO rewrite draft, and I'm going to go ahead and read the email that I, our group, actually, I sent this on behalf of the Currituck citizens against Agenda 21. Dear Commissioners and Planning Board members, we continue to oppose the adoption of the proposed UDO rewrite draft due to the documented objections we provided to each of you by email and during the public comments portion of the February 14th, 2012 Planning Board and February 20th, 2012 Board of Commissioners meetings. At that time, we supplied links to videos that explained in great detail the real threat of the UN Agenda 21 plan, the covert nature of the UN and ICLE and promoting the plan through the guise of terms like sustainability, smart growth, and the direct relationship between Clarion Associates, the consultant the county hired to write the plan, and their involvement nationwide in promoting this very anti-American UN Agenda 21 Sustainable Development scheme. We also provided a copy of and called your attention to the RNC's Republican National Committee, January 13th, 2012 Anti-Agenda 21 Resolution, which condemned the plan and specifically warned that, quote, "federal, state, and local governments to be well-informed about the underlying harmful implications of implementation of United Nations Agenda 21 destructive strategies for sustainable development," and therefore, and thereby endorsing the rejection of its radical policies and any grant monies attached to it. We further provided evidence that objections to Agenda, or UN Agenda 21, were bipartisan in nature by providing a link to Democrats Against Agenda 21, created by Rosa Corr, ASA, author of Behind the Green Mask. Now, since that February 20th meeting, having had additional time to research this sustainability threat and observe reactions to it by surrounding counties, states, and the nation, we are more resolute in our objections to the proposed Currituck UDO rewrite draft. First, the process used to determine the goals and objectives of the rewrite was flawed. Therefore, the outcome is flawed. Clarion and the county stated that the process was citizen-driven, when that is far from the truth. Clarion and the county employed the same boilerplate sustainability solutions and process called consensus to get initial support on a predetermined set of goals with limited and controlled input. Okay? The rest of, I just want to say one last, one last line. I've outlined what the problems are. You asked for some specific reasons. All of that is in this letter. Just to say that, you know, given the problems with the field process, the trend that our neighbors and neighboring counties wake, dare-
Ms. Tab, please.
I just have two, one more sentence. It's just the wind-up sentence on this thing. The insidious nature of the UN-driven plans, we must request the rewrite plan be stopped and start the process over with goals that include-
That's time, please, Ms. Tab.
-protection of individual property rights. Thank you. Excuse me, what was that?
I called time. You continue to go on and on. I'll call the deputy if I cannot get you to stop.
Now, did, when you raised your finger at me, what finger was that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't doing it. I was summoning the deputy.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, I have signed up Josh Bass and Judy Vassar. I suppose y'all would like to talk together, so we'll combine your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are here to talk about the end of the first quarter of the Bi-Local Campaign and the prize drawing. So, again, the contest rules were that it runs quarterly, and anyone may enter five receipts valued at at least $3 from any Currituck business to be entered into the drawing. And they may enter as many times as they can get those five receipts at $3 from any Currituck business. So, the first quarter concluded on February 29th. We had 206 entries, which represented $35,078, $35,078.47 worth of sales in this county for this quarter. So I think that was a fairly impressive number of receipts there. And I'm going to let Judy Vassar, oh, and we had $2,600 worth of prizes donated, and we'll be giving three of those away this evening. The grand prize valued at $1,252. The first runner-up valued at $680, and the second runner-up valued at $200. And I'm going to turn it over to Judy to recognize the contributors.
Thanks to the generous donations of Currituck businesses, we were able to include a contest with the Bi-Local Campaign. They donated more than $2,600 in prizes, and that's just for first quarter. Second quarter started March 1st, concludes on May 31st, and we'll draw for more prizes in June. The businesses that donated to the first quarter included Twyford Law Firm, E.L. Miller &amp; Son, The Point Golf Club, The Carolina Club, LSI Marine Construction, Ray Farms, Mattress Direct, Cables &amp; More, Lammers Glass Gifts and Antiques, Soundside Recycling and Materials, Barefoot Motor Company, Griggs Lumber Company, Ace Hardware, The Petway, Currituck Barbecue, Southland, Kiefer's Bar &amp; Grill, Sherwin-Williams, Island Bookstore, Cotton Gin, and Powell's Roadside Market. And tonight, we draw three winners. We'll draw three different names. We'll start with second runner-up, first runner-up, and then grand prize winner.
And, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask you to come and draw the names, but they've got to be three different names, or we can come to you if it would be easier.
I would suggest why don't we get an impartial person from out of the county. Mr. Woodard's sitting right behind you there.
Because you haven't entered the contest, right? Okay.
All right, this is the score. Second runner-up.
Second runner. Okay, and we've got three. And the second runner-up is Diane Bray.
Well, great.
There's several gift cards as the prize. It's a gift card from Southland, Petway, Randy Outdoor, donated by Barefoot Motors, Lammers Gift, and Cables &amp; More. And the first runner-up goes to Penny Brett, and she wins a gift from E.L. Miller, The Point, Soundside Recycling, Griggs Lumber, Ace Hardware, and Kiefer's Bar &amp; Grill.
And grand prize winner is- Grand roll!
Larry and Julie Williams, and they win the grand prize valued at $1,252 from Twyford Law, LSI Marine Construction, Ray Farms, Mattress Direct, Currituck Barbecue, Sherwin-Williams, and Island Bookstore. So, thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners. Just goes to show you, turn those receipts in. All right, the next person I have signed up to speak, public comment, is Jill Roffus.
Good evening. I'm Jill Roffus of 129 Deer Run, Moayak. One of the things that I wanted to point out at this point is that Clarion still has control of the UDO document, and that they, we cannot locally make changes to that. Is that correct, Mr. Woody?
Um, no.
Oh, it has changed? You do have control of it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Well, that's wonderful. The other thing is, I wanted to see how many of you guys were able to take a chance and look over some of the UN Agenda 21 information that we've been sending to you guys.
I've actually read most of the agenda itself.
Oh, excellent. That is a undertaking.
Well, it's what lawyer-type people do.
Ms. Gilbert, you're in our area, and I just wanted to make sure, did you happen to review any of that documentation?
I've reviewed some of it, yes.
Just some of it? Okay. You know, you see a few of us come up here and say, you know, interject about what's going on. I will say, we do get phone calls, we do get emails, people are watching these meetings from home. One of the things that really kind of bothered me is that there's a person here in the county who doesn't feel comfortable coming forward because they're scared that there may be some form of retaliation from the board. And that really bothers me because this is supposed to be a government by the people for the people. The other thing about the UN Agenda 21, you know, we haven't heard very much about it, but I can probably tell you that James Madison was speaking of something just like this when he said, "I believe there are more instances of abridgement of the freedom of the people by gradual silent encroachments of those in power than by violent and sudden usurpations." So, um, is there any, I know you had a work session today on this. Is there any projected timeline where you're thinking of this being something that will be voted on, the UDO?
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Ms. Woody.
Right, right now, we have, the Planning Board has to consider this again. Planning Board meets next Tuesday, which I believe is March 13th. If the Planning Board makes a recommendation on the UDO at that time, it would then be scheduled for the second April meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
So that'd be the third Monday of April, I'm not sure the exact date.
Okay.
But because we have to advertise it for the Commissioners' meeting, so once the Planning Board makes a recommendation, it takes several weeks of advertising before we can schedule the public hearing.
Okay, because I still, we still have objections to it, and one of the biggest objections that we have are the personal property rights.
I'm, Mr. Chairman.
It does seem to impede on personal property rights that are guaranteed to us by the U.S. Constitution, Fourth Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roffus.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject something?
Yes, sir.
I think folks in the audience should be more concerned with what your federal government is doing to you than what the United Nations is doing in Currituck County. The federal government is trampling all over your rights every day, and we sit back and don't say anything. I don't know anything about what the United Nations plan is for the Currituck County, but I can promise you, the Board of Commissioners are not part of any United Nations plan for Currituck. But we have been talking about the objections, the objections. Might I suggest that we schedule a time with staff and sit down and talk about what the objections are, and get to the root of the issue versus, we know that there's been resolutions against it and so forth, and I want to know what the real objections are and what the issues are. And staff, I assume, Mr. Woody, you can make yourself available, and some of the other staff, and maybe a couple of Commissioners?
We can.
But I certainly don't want to vote on anything that's, that's an issue for the citizens of Currituck, but I haven't seen it yet. I want to know what it is. And instead of us just talking in the public comment, that's not conducive to having the issue discussed. So if the Board of Commissioners would concur, can we not let the staff set a meeting with the ladies and gentlemen that's meaningful to both sides and find out what the-
Second your motion, Dan.
My microphone was off. You want me to start again? Just kidding. But, and, and, and cut to the rub, and let's get, get it done, okay? Is that fair to the board? Okay, and to the folks that have concerns?
Yes, may I rebut your comment for just a moment?
No, I'm sorry, we've got time constraints. We've got special use hearings to come through. I need to move along.
I'd like to add one thing to what Mr. O'Neill. Point out exactly what you're saying in this UDO that was not there before this rewrite came forward, because there's been provisions in this UDO, goes back to 1988, as I said the other meeting, before Agenda 21 ever came into being. And understand, as Mr. O'Neill said, like the Kelo decision, it came down where the government took away a person's property rights by condemning their property for business. This board adopted a resolution the very next week saying that we'd never do something like that. The most important foundation to property rights is in the Constitution, and that's what we're going to maintain. So point out stuff that you're claiming is an infringement on the property rights that were not, that was not there before this rewrite took place.
That was something I was going to address in my rebuttal.
Okay, I'll leave that up to staff. If you, if you'd care to contact Mr. Woody, and at their convenience, they'll arrange a time to get together and hear your objections.
And let us know when it's going to happen.
I'll, I'll pass that information along.
Some of us want to attend, we can come.
Okay. Next, I have Mr. Beatty, Larry Beatty.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Larry Beatty, and I live at 106 Pelican Point Drive, Elizabeth City. We hear a lot of terms, and quite often, we aren't well-educated on what they mean. So I'm going to read to you what is sustainable development. The term sustainable development describes a variety of public policy objectives that seek to better organize communities to protect the environment, stimulate economic development, and promote social equality. These three values are thought to be inseparable and should be considered together as the basis for evaluating all future development. The concept of sustainable development emerged from the 1987 Conference of the World Commission on Environment and Development chaired by George Helm Bruntland. Sustainable development was defined to be development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Various United Nations agencies working in consultation with International Union for the Conservation of Nature compiled a blueprint for achieving sustainable development called Agenda 21. This non-binding policy document was signed by 179 nations, including the United States, at the United Nations Conference on Environmental and Development held in Rio de Janeiro in 1992. This 300-page document contained 40 chapters that addressed virtually every facet of human life, recommendations described in the, in great detail how the concept of sustainable development should be implemented through every level of government. In compliance with one of those recommendations, President Bill Clinton created the President's Council on Sustainable Development by Executive Order Number 12852 on June 29, 1993. The PCSD consisted of 12 cabinet secretaries, top executives, and six major environmental organizations, including the Nature Conservancy, the SCER Club, and the International Union for the Conservation of Nature, as well as top executives from Enron, Browning Ferris, and S.C. Johnson. The PCSD operated through the end of 1999 and was responsible for instilling sustainable development consciousness throughout every agency of the federal government. Using this enormous grant-making powers, the federal government extended sustainable development consciousness throughout state and local governments and created a whole new community of sustainable development NGOs, non-government organizations. The American Planning Association, for example, received 3.8593 million in federal grants for sustainable development. The Sustainable Resource Center received $9,961,000, and the Institute for Sustainable Development received $66,635,422.
That's time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Thank you. Next, Mr. Woodard.
John Woodard, 117 Pelican Point Drive, Elizabeth City. I had some comments that I was going to make, but with what the motion that Mr. O'Neill just put forward, I think I'm going to change my focus just a little bit. I mean, I think that if, that it was never our intent to say that the UDO needs to be completely discarded. It was never that. We were concerned that the company that was producing that document had a, had a bias, and that some of the boilerplate that we've seen in other things was inserted into that and done in an innocuous way that the average person, even well-meaning people like yourselves, would not know what, what they were looking at until the implications. It was kind of like Nancy Pelosi, well, let's pass this thing, and we'll find out what's in it. Well, we, you know, by the time you pass it and generations down the road, some of these things start to unfold, you may, may say, oh, my God, look what we did, and not have the opportunity to change it. The rewrite was not about, let's throw it out. Let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater. Let's find out what the, what the real deal is and what the solutions are that will make it a good document. Everybody wants the Unified Development Ordinance to be a good document that the county can go by. The county needs to grow, and it needs to increase, increase its tax base. So there's nobody against development if it's done in the correct way. I think that this meeting will lead us to a good opportunity to have some meaningful dialogue, and we'll see where that leads us. I sort of feel like we're kind of coming in here at the last minute trying to talk about things in generalities, and we're poring through this thing as best we can, but it takes time, and you can't, and you can't get right to the, to the nitty-gritty of every issue until you can look at the entire document and it's, and it's in complete context. I know that LEED, for example, is a, is a set of development requirements for commercial buildings, and, and being from within the insurance industry, it is a time bomb waiting to strike the, the insurance industry and the counties and the government buildings that, that the industry ensures. So, we're, we're interested in trying to get it right. We're interested in working with you if we can sit down and do something meaningful, come up with a good solution, try to come up with, with suggestions of how we can make the thing better, or to take out offendable language, or explain what the, the things are that you ought to be concerned about. That would be a good process, and I hope that that's, that we get to that in this entire process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. I just have a couple of comments that I want to say about this. When you talk about boilerplate, I hear the terms insidious and radical over and over again. Everybody's copying the same words and describing this alleged conspiracy. The reason I'm reading the original document rather than what's been written about it is because I want to make my own opinion, and I think that's true of everybody on this Board of Commissioners. There's no saying, we didn't come down with yesterday's rain. One of the issues I have, for instance, misrepresentation, we hear over and over again that the Republican National Committee unanimously passed this resolution. That is, in fact, not correct. That's a misrepresentation, and as a member of the Republican Party, I resent that. There is a small committee of 14 members called the Resolution Committee of the Republican National Committee. The actual Republican National Committee comprises some 2,700 delegates. They haven't voted on anything and will not until their convention. So to say this was passed by the Republican National Committee is a statement either designed deliberately or a misinformed attempt to mislead the public about what's actually happened, and I wish that would cease. So when the facts come forth, we obey the facts. Opinions are what you're entitled to offer in this public comment, and we are obligated to let you do that. So that's been satisfied tonight, and I'm going to move on with the rest of the agenda. Next section is public hearings. The first one is a public hearing in action, PBO 7-33, Shingle Landing, Phase 2, request for preliminary, preliminary plat special use permit for 25 additional lots within the Shingle Landing subdivision located in Moayak along Moayak Landing Drive, Tax Map 9, Parcells 29R and 29T, Moayak Township. This being a special use permit hearing, all testimony given in this must be sworn testimony- This being a special use permit hearing, all testimony given in this must be sworn testimony by persons expert in the matters being presented. We do not consider opinion, we do not consider petitions from people that are not here to be cross-examined about this, so anyone that needs to speak to this tonight, please come forward and be sworn in. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. If you want to speak to this, come forward, because after the swearing-in, we're not going to have any other folks.
Somebody's horn is, is wailing. They're going to have a dead battery if they don't cut the horn off.
You take the battery out. All right, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth through help you got. All right, thank you. Open hearing, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for Phase 2 of the Shingle Landing subdivision. Shingle Landing's a single-family subdivision. It's partially, partially built out in the Moyoc area. Currently, that, the property Phase 2 is zoned general business. Phase 1 of Shingle Landing was zoned residential. The GB zoning district, in addition to commercial and other use, is also allows single-family residential uses. You can see to the north of the Shingle Landing, Phase 2 tract, you've got limited manufacturing zoning, you've got residential to the south, you've got GB to the west, and again, Phase 1 to the, to the east. Land use plan designates this area as full service in the Moyoc subareas, where our land use plan does support the development request in front of you tonight. The property itself, Phase 2 that is, is 36.9 acres, consists of 25 lots. 24 of those lots are single-family. One of those lots is the non-residential lot where the assisted-living facility is. Phase 1 of Shingle Landing had 82 lots, so that brings this subdivision over 100 lots total. The project density is 1.7 units per acre. Phase 2, like Phase 1, is served by county water and individual on-site wastewater systems. This request for Phase 2 will be served by the existing infrastructure. As you're aware, the street network has been built to serve Phase 1, so these lots are created along the existing street that exists into the Shingle Landing subdivision. There's also a street G's Drive, which is proposed to connect Moyoc Landing Drive, which is the main drive into Shingle Landing, to the Tolles Creek subdivision by the G's group, so there is an allowance for connectivity. The open space in Phase 2 is approximately 12 acres, and this open space will consist of areas reforested with ponds or pine trees planted in accordance with the North Carolina Forestry specifications. In your case analysis, staff has provided the findings that you have to make in order to issue a special use permit. We also have suggested findings for you. I'm not going to read through each of those findings, but if you have questions, I can answer those. The technical review committee has reviewed this case, as well as, as planning staff, in November of 2011. Pursuant to the Unified Development Ordinance, TRC and planning staff recommends conditional approval subject to the following conditions. I want to go through these real quickly. Condition 1 is provide an update regarding the plan of action for the stormwater maintenance of the subdivision. In this particular instance, Phase 1 of the subdivision still requires additional maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure. Obviously, portions of Phase 2 will contribute to that stormwater infrastructure that exists in Phase 1. To this point, staff cannot recommend approval of this site because we're still awaiting a site visit from NC DNR to ensure that the stormwater permit or the stormwater infrastructure is in compliance with, with the rules and regulations. So bottom line is, to put it simply, is that staff's opinion is that inspection and approval by DNR needs to occur before Phase 2 moves forward. Additional condition number 2 is the roads. The roads in Shingle Landing are private streets. The goal of, of, I believe, the developer and the homeowners association is to have those roads turned over to the state, to the NC DOT, for maintenance. To this point, developer has contacted NC DOT. DOT has been out there. We are aware of the, the improvements or the repairs that need to be made to the roads in Phase 1 and 2 to bring those up to standard. DOT provides kind of a punch list for what needs to occur. That's been done at this point to satisfy the maintenance of the roads. Developers requesting that the board approve a performance guarantee to allow the developer to make the necessary, to complete the necessary road improvements for DOT acceptance. Staff can support the performance guarantee for the roads, as we typically do this for road infrastructure. And what we would note, because obviously, the winter time's not the best time to do roadwork anyways, it's preferable when it's warmer, but we would note if the board does allow a performance guarantee or a performance bond to be placed for the road improvements, we would suggest that, one, we set a deadline, that all the work be completed by September 1st at the latest, the bond be reviewed and approved by the county attorney, and that the amount of the bond is the cost plus 20%. You typically add a plus 20%, which is standard for us to ensure any fluctuations in price. The developer has provided a proposal from a licensed contractor to do those road maintenance improvements. Third condition is G's Drive. The developers indicated to note that the G's Drive connection will not be made at this time. That, that's fine, because there's not any law to access it immediately, so you'd probably have maintenance concerns with building that part of the street. However, when the subdivision on Tolles Creek does move forward, we want to make sure there's a funding source in place to have that, that connectivity done. This is an important connection, as it gets this subdivision connected to the Tolles Creek Road area. So we would suggest that if we do allow that connection to be built at a later time, that again, we require some sort of funding source, such as a performance bond, or something that can be held in place for the future installation of that connection. And finally, last condition is existing drainage ditch, Winslow Ditch, located on the northern property line, contain a 50-foot maintenance easement measured from top of bank. And as we discussed earlier, that just provides a way for, for ditch maintenance to be done in the future with that easement in place. There was a condition about property taxes being paid. As you know, the county requires taxes to be paid before permits are issued. Those have been paid, thus no longer a, a condition of interest or need. The planning board heard this case in December, January, and February, and ultimately recommended denial of the case, of the, of the request due to the application not being complete that motion carried unanimously. I think the principal concern of the planning board was that the, that the roads, and especially the stormwater system, had not been inspected and approved by NC DNR. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if it's okay. Has the application been completed?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, have I noticed Mr. Doxy's concerns on stormwater, have they been addressed?
They have not been addressed.
But is that his recommendation that they be addressed before we move forward?
Yes, sir, and that, that's TRC and planning staff says that NC DNR perform the inspection and verify that the improvements to Phase 1 have been completed.
How about the issues with Miss, Miss, or Michelle Perry, issues not being resolved of the railroad? Have they been addressed?
That is an ongoing issue between, that section involves the county, the developer, and the railroad company, and those are, are being addressed. I don't think that's critical to Phase 2 or Phase 1 of the subdivision.
The stormwater does concern me based on our, our work session we had a while ago. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woody, I have a question on that also. When is the scheduled inspection planned?
My understanding is it's next week.
Okay, so for Phase 1, the inspection still hasn't been done.
Has not been done, no ma'am.
Any further questions, Mr. Woody? The applicant would like to speak.
My name is Eddie Hyman with Hyman &amp; Robey, and I'd like to speak a minute on the items that have been discussed, and try to answer any questions if I could also. The drain, the railroad issue was discussed. That has been forwarded from DOT's attorneys to the railroad's attorneys, and they're working out the particulars on that at this point, and I have not heard anything back as far as any progress, but that, the railroad issue is being discussed with DOT's attorneys and the railroad attorneys, per gretchenbarung at the NC District DOT Office. The DNR maintenance, I want you all to understand that the, the water quality, it's DNR and its water quality and stormwater department is dealing with this, but most of their concerns are not drainage concern, whether, there are no drainage concerns with their stipulation. It's mainly concerning removal of vegetation and the maintenance of these drainage swells so that the water, so vegetation doesn't grow up and plug up the ditches and impede the flow. So, but that's what's being done at this point, and I've been in contact with Scott Vincent. We, we notified him that the owners were ready for another inspection. He was off for a week at class. He's been tied up, as most state agencies are, their, their, their scheduling is, is way down the road anyway. He let me know it would be this coming week when he could get back into the area to make an inspection, so that will take place. Like I said, he's, he's come several times. We've visited, we've had good meetings on-site with planning staff, Mike Doxy and different ones, about the progress that's been taking place. It has been a slow effort because of the weather and the season, but I've been informed by the owners that they're ready for another inspection and feel like it'll, it'll get a thumbs up at this point. And what the, the approval will be, because we can't get vegetation on it this time of year, he said he'll give a vegetation, he'll give an approval on the maintenance that's been taken, taken place, but later on this summer, he'll give a, a final approval on it as vegetation comes back. So that's where we are with that.
Is he Mr. Doxy?
No, Scott Vincent.
Okay.
With the state, and Scott and Mike, we've all met several times. Okay, I'm sorry, Scott Vincent with DNR, and he's from the little Washington Regional Office. He comes down and does the inspections, and I'll be available for any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Hyman?
I have a question. What, what, first of all, Mr. Doxy is our professional.
Sure.
And we have a planning board that has tried to work through this process, and they rejected it. That gives me cause for concern.
Well, then...
You know, well, I'm just saying, we have to look at it that way, and then, you know, with Mr. Doxy being out there, I would prefer that he's satisfied.
I'm not asking you to approve it without DNR's. I'm just reporting where we are with it at this point.
Okay. What are the issues with the railroad? Just for curiosity.
Initially, when we, when we relocated the crossing, there wasn't a crossing on-site. When we relocated it to better suit the needs of the property, permits were issued with, and contracts were, were issued with Rail America, I believe, or Almar Chesapeake. There's two entities with the railroad company involved, and I haven't studied this lately, so I'm, I'm kind of going from memory. When the initial contracts were made and the crossing agreements were made, when the road or the right-of-way that the crossing was, was reverted to public use or dedicated to public use, the railroad fees would, would diminish or would go away. They'd be abandoned. There's been some question about the abandonment of the crossing fees or the annual fees for the crossing, and where, like I said, the original agreements were made with one entity, there's another entity involved, and that's, like I said, that's where DOT's attorneys, because DOT has crossings, they deal with these crossings all up and down the coast or the, the state actually, and that's why DOT's attorneys and the railroad attorneys are working out the particulars.
I understand. I, I was just sort of confused on that.
And that's, that's what was going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions, Mr. Hyman? Thank you, Mr. Hyman. Okay, the other folks who signed up to speak? I don't have your names, so somebody might have to volunteer. All right.
My name is Tommy Hardison, live at 112 Applewood Drive. If I can give you this, might make it a little bit easier to understand. This is the first lot I have from Water Resource. It's about, I wrote, wrote last year, well, in, in the year 2010, and I felt like something was going on that wasn't supposed to be, and sure enough, if you look on the back, you see three violations where, where they had, and this was in 2010. They had, they had ample time to have everything they had to do in this past year. They could have done it if they'd have started on earlier, but they didn't, and that's the way they work. They wait up to the last minute before they do anything right. And this, the last sheet is from the, Mr. Woody, and, and on the last sheet, Mr. Woody said everything would not, anything on this new project on Phase 2 would not be done until everything on the back of Phase 1 would, would be fixed up and done right, like it's supposed to. And that's all we want from out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joanne Gemeness, and I live at 124 Applewood Drive. I have been a resident of Shingle Landing for a year and a half, and I am deeply concerned with the condition of our neighborhood due to the poor building of our roadways, sidewalks, and many of the ditches and swells not draining properly. We, as a neighborhood, are concerned that repairs will not be completed as required by DOT. On June 2nd, 2011, I petitioned for our neighborhood, for NDOT, to put us on the agenda for them to take over our roads. On August the 1st, 2011, I received a list from DOT informing us that the roads do not qualify in their deficiencies. At that point, we began trying to have meetings with the developer and called county commissioners, Mr. Ben Woody, Marion Gilbert, and Donna Volva for assistance. We were unable to get any results until I contacted Scott Vincent with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Mr. Vincent contacted Mr. Old about the stormwater drains and was able to get him to work on some of the swells. In the meantime, I approached Mr. Old, asking him to please come to our meeting so we could express some of our concerns of Shingle Landing because of the residents refused to take over the association until our neighborhood is placed in the proper criteria. Many of the residents were not aware we had an association. Many of us were told by our real estate agents that there was an association, but it was not active. The summer of 2011, I approached Mr. Old, gave him a list of repairs needed on the roadway, sidewalks, stop signs, ditches, and swells not draining properly. He stated he did receive his correspondence from DOT in reference to the items on the list. We have waited patiently for signs of repairs, but most of the repairs have not been completed. On 11/29, we received a letter from Hyman &amp; Robey requesting the meeting on December the 7th, 2011, to give us information on the proposed Shingle Landing Phase 2. Since then, Mr. Old and Mr. Williams has gone to the planning board in January and February requesting the preliminary plat special use permit for the 25 additional lots in front of Shingle Landing called Phase 2. At both meetings, they did not have the required paperwork, so it was tabled and denied. I cannot emphasize enough the many problems we have had in trying to hold Mr. Old and Mr. Williams as promised that they would do the things that they said they would do. The only progress we have seen is the removal of a few rocks out of the Rock Check Dam, Rock Check Dam, cutting of a few pine trees, and trimming vegetation and swells. At this point, we still need our sidewalks repaired, stop signs need to be at seven feet high to the North Carolina Code, swells with water ponding, roads need desperate repaving along the soil, eroding along the pavement. Please be advised that the residents of Shingle Landing have, from the very beginning to the present time, maintained all maintenance on all common ground areas and have mowed 90% of the ditches. Please note, we have no active association or monies to pay for this maintenance, but it has been strictly volunteer basis. This is all, this all started back in June of 2011, nine months ago, and we are still asking for Mr. Old and Mr. Williams to finish repairing our neighborhood in a professional way before proceeding to Phase 2. We're just asking for them to please finish our neighborhood before they go on to the next. Our swells are still full of water, they're not draining properly. Our roads are awful, awful. We've got, they're just caving down on the side, the grounds are caving down. Our sidewalks have cracks all in them, and this is a nice neighborhood, and I feel like we deserve what we pay for, and we're not getting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Crocker, and I live at 134 Applewood Drive in Shingle Landing in Moyoc. My husband and I truly enjoy living in this development. We like the country feel it has, even though we're part of a big community. However, we've been dealing with some issues since we moved in. We, along with many of the neighbors, have been working together to keep our development maintained. The common areas and ditches were overgrown with weeds, grass, trees, rocks, and other debris. Several, several different neighbors had contacted the developer to ask for help in cleaning these things up. We received no such help until our developer proposed adding a second phase to our neighborhood. My husband and I have no problem with a second phase being built as long as the first phase is completed properly. We need our ditches and roads approved by the state. The ditches have been mostly cleaned up. In North Carolina, Department of Transportation has marked our roads that need to be fixed, and there's a lot that needs to be done. Uh, the common areas have had the debris removed. And although all this work has been done, there's still more that needs to be done. It's our understanding that the, the developer would do all this when most of the homes were completed. Well, now there's only approximately five lots left. And our concern is that the developer will put off making these necessary repairs and not get it done. It's a valid concern, I believe, based on recent history. Mr. Old received notice from the state Stormwater Department last September that the ditches needed to be fixed. On August 1st, the Department of Transportation sent Mr. Old a letter detailing the items that needed to be fixed before the state would take over the roads. In December, when the developers came before the planning board, they had not completed these items. Each month, the, the developers came back before the planning board to say they still hadn't completed the items. Our concern is this. If presenting before the planning board and the Board of Commissioners does not make the developer complete his work, how can we as homeowners do that? We need your help to make sure that Shingle Landing continues to be a good place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this matter? Mr. Hyman, do you wish to rebut any of the comments?
There's not much rebuttal. The, the last girl summed it up. They have made some progress. They, uh, when they did, when I say progress, like I said, the, the DOT came out and marked the trouble areas. Uh, they were quite extensive. They've got a contractor to come in after that to, uh, give a price to do the repairs. Uh, they have a, a budget for that. That, uh, like I said, when and if we have our Deaner approval, we would ask that we could bond that, just like the, uh, recommendations from planning staff have asked, so that they could move forward with the Phase Two. While you're holding a bond, it can guarantee the repairs of Phase One. Um, the, the ditching and the brush removal has, like I say, has been well underway. They, I've walked it several times. Like I said, we've met with Deaner on one inspection, and he gave us some more advice on things that need to be done. The, so progress is being made slowly and painfully, but it is being made. And that's, uh, the meeting tonight was scheduled, hoping we could get a Deaner approval before we came, but it, it had not come through. And, um, so that's, that's where we are. But like I said, they have made a lot of progress from the September and the August and September. The roads aren't fixed back to 100% yet. The, the drainage swales are not mowed 100% yet. But, well, I take that back. I, I haven't been back out there since the owners have let me know that they are ready. Um, they were working on them as late as Monday a week ago, or the weekend a week ago, not this past weekend. Um, and that's where we are. And that's just what I wanted to, like I said, there's, um, ill feelings because of slow progress, and I understand that. I do also understand that I, I think the developers will come through and make it happen. And y'all have the authority to hold their feet to that fire, so.
Chairman, may I ask, the, the lady that was the last person up here, can you stand up real quick? You said the NC DOT went out there to look at the roads in August? Is that what you said?
Yes. In August, the Department of Transportation sent him a letter detailing the items that needed to be fixed.
And they haven't been done yet?
No.
So we got September, October, November, December, January, February, and now March. Now, do you understand their frustration?
Well, I understand it. I'm, I'm in the middle of it. I mean, I've, I've held community meetings. I've been kind of a liaison between the community and the developers. And that's where I stand here, between you and the developers, uh, to represent them. The, um, the letter was, Gretchen wrote through and wrote and observed what she saw and wrote a letter of things that needed to be fixed. We asked her to come out and paint the paving. Uh, we needed an area, we, we, Gretchen is the one that we're going to have to make happy with this and we, or DOT. And, um, so we asked her to come out and mark the paving. The, and these are no excuses. I'm just telling you what's, has happened along the way. We had a hurricane or a storm that created inlets. We were trying to get DOT to come out and make, make marks on the pavement where shoulders are breaking off, where you've got potholes, you've got places that, where ditches have, have balled in. There's, it's just, it needs repair. And we had DOT, wanted to get DOT out. It took them a long time to come out and get a repair or get the pavements marked where we need to repair it for a contractor to come look at it and give us a price to do the repairs. Doesn't happen fast. I realize it's, well, and, and like I say, I'm not here to argue or make excuses. I'm just trying to give you facts of where it's gone from here. We, Deaner comes in and writes a letter and says, we need you, you need to go out and mow the ditches. Well, they made an attempt on what they thought needed to be done. We called for an inspection, and Deaner then explained to them how they wanted it mowed. They've gone back and done more maintenance, and, and now we're awaiting another inspection.
I have a question for Mr. Woody. I'm sorry, I'm taking up some of this. Is it plausible that if Phase One stormwater problems are not fixed and Phase Two proceeds, proceeds, will, will the, the work in Phase Two make the problem in Phase One stormwater worse?
Yes.
It seems plausible to me, yes. That's, that's why we would like to see Phase One corrected.
Do you understand what we're talking about? If you don't fix Phase One, you go to Phase Two. We still got a problem with Phase One that makes it worse.
Let me explain again. The, the issues that Deaner is wanting repaired is, aren't drainage issues. They're vegetation issues. The drainage, Scott stood right there in several meetings, said the drainage is look great. The drainage is fine. But the reason, the maintenance that he wants done is the, the temporary check dams that were in the, in the way to prevent erosion, they need to come out. They had grown up with trees. They needed to cut the trees out of it. The, as the trees grow up, they shade the areas that need to be vegetated and will, and the vegetation will die under the trees. So they want all the trees cut down. And, and so that's the maintenance that we're talking about. The drainage is the, what Deaner wants done is there's no drainage concerns there. There's maintenance for vegetation and things like that.
Well, when I see Mr. Doxy's got stormwater issues.
Well, it's just a stormwater division, water quality division, this, this, this trying to get us to maintain these things. Now, and, and there might have been some drainage issues early on, but right now, that's all been repaired.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to address this. I've worked closely with the homeowners, with the developers, with the staff on this project. And, um, at this point in time, with the permits not in compliance with the other issues with the conditions that's been brought forth from the planning department, I would like to make a recommendation that we go ahead and continue this public hearing till the first meeting of April, so that NC Deaner can come in and take care of that inspection to get them compliant. And we bring this back up April 1, um, so that it gives the staff some time, along with the attorney, to look at the, um, performance bonds and some of the other items that, that need to be addressed conditionally, um, so we can get Phase One, you know, to a happy medium or find some accord between the homeowners and the developers. Um, this has been, you know, a, a learning experience for me, and, and I want to appreciate all of the homeowners that have been out here. And Mr. Hyman, you and I have had lots of conversations, Mr. Old. Um, so I, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we continue this public hearing till the 1st of April to satisfy some of these conditions.
I couldn't ask for any more than that.
Mr. Chairman, that, that would, I would ask that you, it'd be April 2nd would be your board commissioner meeting?
Well, the first, the first meeting of April is what I've heard. So it's April 2nd.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Motion.
Motion to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, this is continued until April 2nd meeting.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, community development block grant. Currituck County is applying to the NC Department of Commerce for a 2011 scattered site housing community development block grant of $400,000, which is 100% of the total program cost. Proposed activities may include housing rehabilitation, reconstruction, relocation, and urgent repair to assist low-income homeowners.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are pleased to announce, uh, that Currituck County expects to receive a $400,000 community development block grant, as you just said. It is for the scattered site housing program. Um, the North Carolina Department of Commerce offers a number of grants through the community development block grant program. So we're pursuing scattered site housing, but I want the board to be aware that there are other grant opportunities, opportunities that are also available. And I, and I hope that in the future, as we build our relationship with this department and this program, we can continue to pursue other grants to assist our, our residents with their housing needs, infrastructure needs. There's even, um, small business type startup grants available too. So we'd like to build that relationship and make this the first of many grants that the county pursues. Uh, this particular grant, um, is in place to fund low-income homeowners with their housing rehab or replacement needs. Um, typically what we do with this grant is we, we target very low-income households. The incomes have to be, um, at or below 50% of the median income. So these are the very, very low-income residents here in Currituck County. Um, the grant funds we have, $400,000, that pays not only for the rehab and replacement, which we think we can do between four and six homes, it also pays for the costs that are incurred by the county. So even the advertising, we have some consulting help for technical aspects. All that's paid for by the grant. So outside of staff time, there's really no cost to Currituck County in this. Um, the last time we participated in this program was in 2002. So it's been a while, and we're happy to be back in this. This is actually, oddly enough, is a 2011 program. So I know we're in 2012, but it's a 2011 program. We'll be eligible again in 2014. So it's just two years from now, I'll be doing this again with you. Um, we've asked the Wood and Company to help us to provide technical assistance. They have a lot of experience. When we selected a consulting firm, we went, we looked for who had the absolute most experience and most success we could find in the state, in the eastern part of North Carolina. So I feel good about our technical assistance we're going to receive. Uh, what we are doing is, when we, we run through this program, as I said earlier, it's targeted at low-income homeowners. But additionally, we try to prioritize based on other factors, such as obviously the income, but the age of, of the individual. Um, this program targets elderly folks that, that are on fixed incomes, don't have the resources to make improvements to their house. Um, we target people that have handicap statuses, people that are, that are unable to work. Um, then of course, the size of the household. So what we're looking for, and there's criteria, so it's an objective thing, it's not subjective, but we try to target folks, um, that have low incomes and that are in need of this assistance, and, and particularly the elderly or, or even more so elderly folks that have, that are keeping small children. So those are the kind of things that qualify well. Um, we are, we are kind of rolling this, public hearings required. We're glad to do it to let folks know that Currituck County is pursuing these opportunities. And we had advertised applications. We have received applications. Um, and we are going through the selection process now. I will be back in front of you at your next meeting on March 19th, providing you with a list of the selected candidates, as well as a list of alternates. So what our plan to do is, is to go ahead and select four to six candidates, have an alternate list, and before we actually move forward with the candidate, to make sure they actually meet the criteria and it's a viable rehab or replacement project. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions you have. I feel like this is a positive program for the county, and I look forward to the impact it will make on our homeowners.
Ben, I have one question. How have we educated the public that this is available?
We have done that through newspaper advertisements, which probably isn't the most effective way to do that. Um, I have, I've had some, I've asked some commissioners to, to provide me with some contacts. We have tried to send information to the church community. Um, so we've tried our best to get the word out as much as possible. I, I'll tell you, because of the way this opened up to us, we, we just not too long ago resolved a previous cycle. So this is all happening very, very fast for us. So, um, in the future, I think I would like to spend more time on the front end, getting the word out on this, but we were just very limited in our timeframe.
I've, I've not heard anything at all in Nassau on about it whatsoever. It's all new to me.
Mr. Woody, I have a question for you on that, because, um, I just recently heard about this program, and the question's been posed to me as far as the type of house, um, that could be rehabilitated. Is it limited to stick-built, to modular, mobile? Is there any stipulations in the, in the request, um, that, that would?
There, there's not stipulations. You really can, can rehab, um, almost anything. We, within the criteria, though, you generally, you will score stick-built and modulars higher than you will for, for rehab than a manufactured home. You're going to target manufactured homes typically for replacement.
Okay.
So there, there are some criteria. And that's where our technical assistance comes in. They help us work through, um, realistically what you can be successful with in the way, in terms of rehab versus replacement.
Mr. Woody.
Thank you.
Do we have any separation between the homes that were damaged in Irene? And you following me? I mean, some FEMA fixed some of these things, some of them they didn't. Is there a separation there? So we're not?
There is. The program that Ms. Christenberry was up here about earlier today, that really focuses on elevating homes. Unfortunately, or maybe not, but this community development block grant program actually docks points or penalizes points for properties that are in flood zones, particularly ones that are below base flood elevation. So this program targets more of homes that don't have the repetitive loss history for flooding, whereas what Ms. Christenberry reviewed is going to focus more on those types of homes.
Thank you.
Do you have any literature?
I have, I have a ton of, I have a lot of literature.
Please prepare some for me so I can get it in Nassau.
I'll do that.
The, the publication indicated that the, uh, end of the application period was the 29th. Has that passed?
It has passed. We, we have received, we've received 18 applications, and we're sorting through those right now. Uh, I will tell you, though, I, I like to get in a habit of, I'd like for the county to be more involved in these types of grant programs. So I would welcome, even at this point, names of potential candidates. So as we find these grants, as grants are rolling, we can continue to have a list to build upon. So we'd like to build a database of candidates and, and get back involved in these types of programs.
Have we set a cap on per residence? Uh, or is it every case individual?
That's in the grant.
You mean a, a cap as far as the amount of money that's spent, or?
Right. But, you know, you don't want to spend it all on one house.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's caps in the grant. I want to say it's maybe 70,000. There, there is a cap, there's a cap. So no, you, you can't allocate all the money to one property.
Okay.
You shouldn't. Yeah.
One of the sources of, uh, potential candidates I found was through the school system. I discussed this with the assistant superintendent at one of the meetings of Currituck Kids, because oftentimes the teachers become aware of children living in substandard housing. So I think that would be a good way to publicize this the next application period we have. So I know the newspaper circulation, you know, the people who are likely to apply for this may not get a newspaper. And, uh, I think it would be helpful if we did that.
Well, the civic organizations that are around, I mean, by, by the way, they're involved in that kind of stuff day to day, just like you're talking about Currituck Kids. I mean, you have the Ruitons, you have the churches. I mean, there's numerous ways of doing it, but we just, we just got to get the information out to everyone. So it's a fair play in field.
Can we establish an advisory board for this? Um, just like we?
No.
No? Okay.
A, a, a public meeting, a work session, might be a good.
Yeah. Well, I, I apologize. We, we could have done a better job of advertising this program. I, I just think, given the circumstances, we, we really did the best we can. But I would like from this point forward to, to have this more out in the public eye and more available to our citizens.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is that we adopt internal safeguards to make sure a repeat of what happened in the 2002 grant cycle doesn't happen with this one. And we go nine years without being able to participate in those programs.
Well, I discussed that with, uh, Mr. Scanlon, and I believe that issue, that issue has been resolved in that we administer these locally now rather than through the Albor Mark Commission?
That's correct.
Okay. So, which, in your, your bailiwick, you're going to be in charge.
We've got warning signals out there for sure. We've got warning signals out there, for sure.
All right. Does it cost for, for a public hearing, do we actually need to take action on this particular item? Or is this just information for us?
It's just information, also, there's no action that needs to be.
Okay, any other comments?
I'll be back next meeting and asking you to take action.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's move on to item C then. Public hearing for filing application with the local government commission and approving financing agreement for the College of the Albormar Aviation Training and Technical Facility.
Mr. Chairman, we appeared before the Board several meetings ago and asked approval of the Board to be able to go in front of the LGC, the Local Government Commission, with a package to finance the construction of the Aviation Technical Training Institute, or Center. The Board supported that application. Since then, the LGC has reviewed the project, the project budget, the county's finances, the county's debt program, and they offered an approval for us moving forward. The next step was to put the project out for bids. We have done that. We had two banks that submitted bids. In your package tonight, you have a resolution to support Town Bank of Currituck, which was the low bidder, to allow Currituck County to borrow $6.8 million for a seven-year period of time, at an interest rate of 1.66%. We have identified constructions, our capital sales tax, to support the debt, so it will not be property tax-supported. And we're asking the Board of Commissioners approval tonight for this, and this does require a public hearing before you take action.
Okay, we're open to a public hearing. Does anyone care to address this matter? Hearing no one, I close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move forward.
Mr. Chairman, in your package is a resolution, looks very similar. You saw this one several weeks ago. We are starting the same process to installment purchase finance the new proposed wastewater plant in Moayok. Right now, what's in front of you, there's a seven-point finding that the Board of Commissioners needs to make in order to be able to submit this package to the LGC for their consideration. The, the items you have is, the first one is that the project is necessary. Number two, that the financing, that installment purchasing is preferred over bond financing, which we feel like it is. We're looking for, being since the issuance cost for bonds in long-term, we're not looking to do that. We're looking at short-term finance, that the amounts are not, are not excessive. We support that with the design-build contract and the estimates given to us by the design professionals. The, it will not require a tax increase to support this. In fact, it would be a user-based increase, a user-based paid debt, meaning those that are on the system will be responsible for paying it. If you're not on the utility system, you will not pay towards it. Our debt package, our obligations and stuff, we are in compliance with our rules and regulations on debt. The county attorney has reviewed the, the process we're going through to make sure that we are legally in compliance, and those are the findings, the facts the Board needs to make. If you make those findings, again, we'll submit the application for LGC, LGC for their review. Once they review, if they approve it, then we'll be coming back to you, just like we did with the financing for the COA building, we'll be coming back to you with approval for the specific financing plan. This does require a public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. We're open to a public hearing, and with the comment that this is the application to the local government council, not the actual application for the indebtedness.
That is correct.
Anybody wish to comment on?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Manager, do we still have a targeted, if all goes well, of being online November this year?
Yes, sir, it is.
We had mentioned at our retreat, have you, how's the, how's the reception been as far as people signing up to get on it? Is it starting to go on pretty good?
We haven't actually start taking reservations. That's the next step in the process, is to go up and have a, a community meeting, an open house in the Moayok area, so the engineering and the construction team can go up there, present the package. We have put together the, the cost of the system, the impact fee and the monthly anticipated cost. We'll roll that out and take reservations. But the, in advance of that, the, the response we've gotten has been very, very positive, very favorable.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Anyone in the audience care to comment?
Not hearing any, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner's report. Mr. Heidler.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Board.
Mr. Petrie.
Another reminder, March 17th, night of the races. Corolla Wild Horse Fund fundraiser.
Pate.
A lot of fun. And last year, we raised $12,000 for Currituck County's state horse and our number-one tourist attraction. So I encourage you to get in touch with Karen McAlpin and her team. It's, it's a great time. Encourage you to get in touch. Support your local horse.
Mr. Petrie, do you have your hat ready?
After Commissioner Etheridge won the hat contest last year, I don't even want to get in. And it wasn't even his hat, that was probably what it.
It was a ladies' and gentlemen's hat contest, so if you come, be prepared.
Bring your own hat.
I can't help it if I wore it better than the lady who designed it.
Well, she's out there, I'll let you deal with that, so.
Mr. Gilbert.
Couple things. First of all, I want to thank Diane Nordstrom. She's worked diligently with the city of Chesapeake to get our Welcome Center sign that's one mile out from the Tourism Center, back up. We made a few phone calls, emails with the city of Chesapeake, and that sign is back up, and it has increased the traffic at the Tourism Visitor Center. Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the Currituck House hogwash on March 1st. That was a lot of good, clean fun, although those of us that participated in the hogwashing got a little bit dirty. And lastly, on March 12th, at 7 o'clock at Moayok Baptist Church, they are sponsoring a public meeting on incorporation in Moayok. So I invite anybody that would like to attend that to be there.
Mr. Martin.
Haven't had to report tonight, thank you.
Mr. Etheridge.
Just remind everybody, I believe it's this Saturday, the Currituck Arts Council is having a show at their facility up at the Moayok Library. I think it starts at 10:00 a.m. and runs to maybe 3:00.
Mr. O'Neill.
Just remind everybody about Thursday, I'm sure the manager will do that, so I'll remind him so he doesn't forget.
Okay. You're going to remind everybody, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was going to make note of also March 12th, 5:30 to 7:00, out at the Pine Island Volunteer Fire Department. The Charter School, Waters Edge Village School up in Corolla has been approved, and they're going to have a podluck, and they are inviting everybody to come and learn about what's going, going on out there. And I know some folks from Currituck Kids are going, and I was planning to go to that too. So if you have an opportunity, that would be a nice event, go find out what's going on in Corolla. And Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to go ahead and recognize that this Thursday at 9:00, we will be having the dedication for the community center where the YMCA is at. Public is invited, we certainly encourage them to come out.
9:00 to start.
9:00.
Okay, because I've seen 9:30, and I've seen 9:00.
Well, we told you 9:30, so.
9:00.
On Friday.
9:30 on Friday.
Yeah, be there early. 10:30, we'll be having the groundbreaking for the Aviation Technical Training Center. The event is actually scheduled at the Auditorium of the Cooperative Extension, anticipating poor weather. We will make arrangements to have people go over to the site. We'll be able to actually do the groundbreaking at site, hopefully, if it, if the ground allows. But that is, that starts at 10:30.
Mr. Scanlon, you, I think we had talked about Currituck Cares.
Yes. I sent out to the Board of Commissioners, I believe I've heard back from the majority of y'all for staff to go ahead and move forward with the program titled Currituck Cares, which is a telephone notification system where we could do follow-up for folks that need checking up on. And I believe the Board supports that, and staff will move forward with that program.
Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good evening.